It is now 6:00 PM, December 10, 2018. And I call to order the biannual organizational meeting. May we have real call, please?
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Protam Cox.
Here.
Councilmember Gomez.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Negrete. Councilmember Kennedy and Negrete are absent.
At this time, we will have everyone stand for the presentation of callers by the Victor Valley High School California Cadet Corp. And remain standing for the pledge of allegiance led by Police Chief Rick Bassinger and the invocation delivered by Pastor Dane Davis of First Christian Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order, march. Right face. Forward, march. Left, left, right, left, left, left.
In First Timothy, Chapter 2, the Apostle Paul writes, "I urge then, first of all, that requests, prayers, intercession, and thanksgiving be made for everyone. For leaders and all those in authority, that we may live peaceful and quiet lives in all godliness and holiness. This is good and pleases God, our Savior, who wants all men to be saved and to come to a knowledge of the truth." Would you pray with me? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this special evening in the life of our city. We thank you, Lord, for our mayor, Gloria Garcia. We thank you for each of the city council members who have served faithfully during the year 2018. And we thank you for our new, our two new city council members who will be sworn in tonight. Lord, we pray that as we move into this new year, 2019, that the city council would serve together with wisdom, that they would serve together in unity, oh Lord, working together as one person contending for the good of this city and the advancement of your purposes, oh God, here in this community. I pray that the city of Victorville would be a beacon in the high desert, that we would light the way for other cities like Asperia and Apple Valley and Adelanto and Barstow. Oh God, I pray that where there has been disunity, that you would bring us together as one, and we pray, oh God, that that would begin to take shape tonight. I thank you for each of these members who have served our city this past year and those who will serve in the months and years to come. Be with them, oh God, protect them and their families, give them guidance and wisdom. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. You may be seated.
At this time, can we have our city clerk give us the statement of election results, please?
The whole number of ballots cast in the city for the November 6, 2018 election was The names of persons voted for at the election for a member of the city council are as follows: Lizette Angelo, 4,679; Deborah Jones, 6,691; Daniel J. Ramos, 3,206; Rita Ramirez, 5,196; Jerry Laws, 1,001; Lionel M. Do, 4,738; Eric Negrete, 4,909; Manuel Musquez, 730; Valentin Godina, 711; Christine Blakely, 1,499; and Leslie Irving, 3,424.
Thank you. The adoption of Resolution Number 18-099. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
That the city council adopt Resolution Number 18-099, reciting the fact of the general municipal election held on November 6, 2018, declaring the result and such other matters as provided by law.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of Resolution Number 18-099.
Thank you, and a second.
I have a motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy and Negrete absent.
Now we have... Can I have our city clerk present the certificates of election, please?
At this time, I will ask Deborah Jones and Dr. Rita Ramirez to join me in front of the dais. I will present the certificates of election.
Thank you.
At this time, Dr. Edwin Gomez will administer the oath of office to Deborah Jones. I'd also like to ask a few people to join Deborah: Jean and Joshua Jones, Georgiana Clifton, Laura Hamilton, Robert McCoy, Michael Baznot, Lonnie Harris, Jesus Salis, Malachi Saccido, Lallani Torres, Deegan and Conlin Cozboom, J. Patrick Anthony and Zoe Smith, and Karina Madrid.
Tonight, it's my honor and privilege to administer the oath of office for Mrs. Deborah Jones. Please raise your right hand, Mrs. Jones, and repeat after me. I, Deborah Jones.
I, Deborah Jones.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support. And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
State.
Of the state.
Of California.
Of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
Allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation.
That I take this obligation.
Freely.
Freely.
Without any mental.
Without any mental reservation.
Or a purpose of evasion.
Or a purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter. Dr. Gomez, thank you so much.
Thank you. It is my pleasure and honor to present to you our city councilwoman, Mrs. Deborah Jones.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Where did our city clerk go? Dr. Rita Ramirez? Mayor Garcia? I was looking at the wrong name. Sorry. I apologize.
Now it is an honor and a pleasure to give the oath of affirmation to Dr. Rita Ramirez. And Rita, you repeat after me, okay?
Slowly.
Slowly, yes, we will do it slowly, okay?
Too nervous.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
I will bear true faith.
And alliance to the Constitution.
And alliance to the Constitution.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The United States and the Constitution of California?
State of California. I'm sorry, I'm going too fast for you. That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental.
Without any mental.
Reservation.
Reservation.
Or purpose.
Or purpose.
Or evasion.
Or evasion.
And that I will.
That I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully. I will. My faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge of these duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Thank you. And now I present to you, councilwoman, Dr. Rita Ramirez.
Thank you. I would like to thank the people who are here, especially those who have helped me so much throughout the past and the future, and I would like to mention their names. Denise Wells, please stand. Vincen Holland. Manny Lopez. Fernando Hernandez. Socorro Cisneros. Pastor Porres. Pedro and his wife. Sarah Garcia. No, no, you need to stand, I just forgot your name, I'm too nervous. Her husband, Mr. Hernandez over there, might be related to me. Richard. Richard, please stand. I want to thank you. Tony. Serena. I cannot remember. Oh. Elvira? Where are you? And her son, oh God. It's a pleasure, it's a wonder, it's a miracle that I'm here. It's only through the grace of God and the voters of Victorville who understood my love for the city and the residents and my love for... Let me say that one cannot replace the friendship and the love that I have been given today, yesterday, and tomorrow. And I promise that I will do my very, very best for everyone because I have been elected to represent the city of Victorville. God bless you all.
Welcome, Elvira, welcome.
What a blessing.
Madam Clerk, I believe it's your turn. If the newly elected would like to have remarks?
Yes, Madam Mayor, who would you like to call on first?
Are we ready for number four?
Yes.
Who we are? I would like to nominate.
No, no. We're... You're giving remarks right now.
So I'll begin, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you very much. First of all, everyone, thank you so much for being here. First, I'd like to thank my Lord for allowing me the opportunity to serve my neighbors in this new and deeper way. To my husband, my love, and my biggest cheerleader, my family and dear friends, thank you for sticking close to me, for encouraging me, and for giving me wise counsel. To Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Negrete, who are not here this evening, thank you. I am grateful for your accomplishments and the years of hard work in service to our community. You will be missed. Thank you to all those who supported or voted for me. I will do my level best to prove worthy of your trust and confidence. In transitioning from candidate to councilmember, it is now my solemn duty to serve all my Victorville neighbors, and I will do so faithfully, recognizing the beauty and value in our democracy of all races, creeds, and political persuasions. Please know, I will work hard for you, I will listen to you, and endeavor to incorporate your views into my deliberations. We won't always agree, but in those times, it's my hope that you will find that I've carefully weighed the merits of an issue, seeking always that which advances the long-term success of our city. That said, I intend to do my part in creating the best possible conditions for this council to become increasingly effective and to inspire greater confidence in leadership. To my colleagues on the governance team, I commit to each of you that I will govern through law, policy, and procedure, and foster fidelity to good, best practices in governance. Be respectful and helpful to each of you unconditionally. I'll work to promote positive constructive and productive teamwork, and I will be willing to learn from you. Tonight, we have a new team, a fresh start. We can accomplish much if we latch on to a shared unity of purpose, that commitment, that commitment to transcend individual differences, to focus on the greater good. We can move Victorville toward becoming the thriving community we know it can be. In my view, very briefly, some of the priorities before us are to combat crime, and I'm a big supporter of law enforcement, so I'd like to see if we can promote increased trust and transparency in their work, perhaps by way of a community oversight board coordinated with neighboring cities and the county board of supervisors. There'll be more on that in the days ahead, I'm sure. The second thing is to tackle the complex issue of homelessness, perhaps via a specialized tax force. Task force, again, more on that in the days ahead. And to make our city strong and vibrant through good governance, a sustainable economy, improved infrastructure, and effective public safety. No one would argue that much work lies ahead for us. Our constituency counts on us to get the job done right, and yes, we can do this. Helen Keller sums up my view of this team and this community perfectly, and that is, alone, we can do so little; together, we can do so much. Thank you.
Dr. Rita.
I would like to say that it's a privilege to be an American. We are all here because we believe in a government of and by four people, and it's people that matter. We're elected to do the best, to look at the concerns and listen to each and every one of you. I personally, being a former community college professor of 38 years, I know that if it wasn't for my education, I certainly would not be here. Because it takes a lot of knowledge, wisdom, and experience to be elected. You have to understand the world and understand the concerns of people and the need of children. That is the reason why. It is my mission to enhance the quality of life for all citizens of the city of Victorville. And I know, speaking to other businesses, that we need a state university up here. Accessibility is important. Higher education provides you the opportunity to be who you are, not to always have to say yes when you want to say no. It is important because it will complete the educational scale of what we have. We have elementary, junior high, high school, community college. Well, we need a state university because we have to also have professional educators to be ready for the big businesses that will be coming to our city of Victorville. Not only will you be receiving an education, but there will be a job opportunity with better wages and, of course, the quality of life. For when you have education, you have opportunities that you don't even know. Without education, there is no future, and Victorville is going to give that future to each and every one of you because you're never, never too old to go to school. Now remember that. But as much education is important, I have asked Mr. Cox to let me vote the first time on a very important matter, the golf course. We have to save everyone's home because your castle is your home, and this affects not only the residents around the golf course, but it affects all property values in the city of Victorville. We always must remember that we have to look at the concerns of those that we're not aware of. When I first came and I heard them say, "You need to save the golf course," I said, "But I don't, I don't play, I don't know golf, so why should I worry?" Then I did research, and when I found out that 40 to 50% of the value of the property would be lost if we didn't save the golf course, then I knew that my first priority had to be to the residents and everyone by saving the golf course. And that's going to hopefully be my very first vote as a city councilmember because I believe that people come first before politics. One of my major projects will be downtown. They call it the Old Town. Let's remove the word "old" because of the fact, people live there and it will become new. We're going to restore it. Route 66 is important, it's historic, and people come from all over the world. I heard of a Japanese man who said, "I traveled the whole route," because that was his dream. So we have something that is very precious, and we must restore it to what it was. Again, to have small businesses, to have hotels, have, let us say, things that we thought could never be done. I can see it as a center of tourism, and we're going to put a big, big sign on that highway so that they know that they should stop and enjoy the quality of life that we're going to have in Old Town, downtown. And we're going to be there for the residents and for the children because what I would like, because I believe in children, is a children's park. A park where children and young families can go in and enjoy themselves, and I am a dreamer, like, for example, a merry-go-round, a petting zoo, pony rides, a soccer field, a basketball court. I mean, I'm telling them where I'm going to spend their money, but let me say, let us put our children and families at a high priority because we need to serve them. And last of all, we need to take care of the homeless, for we are Americans and we take care of each other. We leave no one behind. You've heard that line said in the military, and I believe that we have to serve everyone regardless of what their life may be at this point in time. So as a partnership with the city, the nonprofits, and also, let us say, with small businesses, we can take care of the homeless and give them a hope and faith again because Victorville is a city of love, is a city of compassion, it's a city of brotherhood, and we know that as we sit up here, that we are responsible to you, and that's what really matters. So you need to understand that we are your friends, we are your neighbors, we are your family, and we want to be there for you. But one more big thing that I would like to do, and that is, I would like to make this Southern California Logistic Airport an international airport so that we will be having a lot of jobs and big money, and we're going to have hotels, and we're going to take care of the base. We're going to do what is right, and that is, provide for you a better life. And with God's grace and your support, we can do it all. Nothing is impossible if we work together as a team. So please remember, I love you all. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you both very much. That is very, very encouraging and very touching. Thank you. We move on to item seven.
At this time, I will call for nominations for mayor.
Aye. Dr. Rita Ramirez would like to nominate Gloria Garcia for mayor.
Any other nominations?
I would like to nominate Debra Jones for mayor.
I'll call on the first nomination of Gloria Garcia. Is there a motion?
I vote for Gloria. Aye. Yes.
Is there a second? There being no second, that motion dies. As for Debra Jones, is there a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second? There are no second? Motion dies. At this time, the mayor stays.
At this time, I call for a nomination for mayor pro tem. And I nominate Dr. Rita Ramirez for mayor pro tem.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Mayor Pro Tem Jim Cox.
I know that we'll have a chance to vote on this. I would like to nominate Debra Jones.
The first nomination for Rita Ramirez, is there a motion? Is there a motion? Yes, sorry. Is there a second? You're a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Was there a second on the nomination? Yeah. Councilmember Gomez?
Already voted.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your vote. Motion passes. Dr. Rita Ramirez as mayor pro tem.
Well, I guess that's out of the way. Now we move on to public comments. And I do have some cards. First of all, I would like to say thank you to our residents of the city of Victorville who voted. You really did your research. You voted very intelligently. I am so proud of all those that voted. And now you can see the results. We have a good team up here. And we will see prosperity in our city, unity. And I just want to say thank you very much. And keep in mind, 2020 is coming up. Before we know it, it'll be here. Do the same thing, study the ballots, know who you're going to vote for, and let's do that again, get some good people up here. The first card that I have here, and we're on public comments. Madam Clerk, did you want to read the statement before we start?
This is the time and place for the general public to address the city council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda. Per Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per individual or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the council, not the members of the audience. This is a professional business meeting and courtesy and decorum are expected. Please refrain from any debate between audience and speaker, making loud noises, or engaging in any activity which might be disruptive to the decorum of the meeting.
Thank you. The first card that I have is Oscar Tejeda, and then after Oscar will be Jennifer Netti.
Members, Madam Mayor, congratulations. Congratulations to the new council persons. I want to thank you for the great job, and hopefully we can make this city a little bit better. Don't want to drag this on, but I've been here since 1962, and I've seen this place not really profound, greater than what it was, but I'd like to see more. We have a lot of things to accomplish. Like I said, I want to thank the people who are actually, the leaders are right now. I want to thank the councilmen, I want to thank the, or the presidents, the progress of the city. And thank you for letting Roots help you make some, or make us, let, give you some other decisions that we need in the downtown area. And you are correct, Rita, may I call you Rita, I hope? This is not an old town. The only old town I know is Calico, and that's where it should be. I grew up in Vegas, I went to Vegas, I lived in Vegas. Oscar Goldman helped me make sure that we recall old Las Vegas, what it is. It is Vegas, it's downtown. And that's what this town should have, a downtown environment. And also, for the last one, I want to thank, thank the San Marino Board of Council, Police Department, and the Abundant Living Church for helping us fix an obstacle that we had on D Street, was the release of parolees. Everybody hates that word, but that's what they are. They were being released past eight o'clock and 11:00, which was a dangerous part to a city, to the residents. And thanks to all those three charitable contributions that they made, we got it cleaned up and it started November 26th. And they've been helping and actually doing some work on it. And I want to thank the Police Department for being a good part of helping us get through. Thank you.
After Jennifer will be Dr. Derek King.
Good evening, Mayor Garcia and councilmembers. I am Jennifer Neri, a resident of Old Town and a member of Root. I would first like to congratulate Dr. Rita Ramirez and Debra Jones on your newly-elected positions on the Victorville City Council. Root looks forward to working with you both. For the last three years, Root and the community of Old Town has been working on the goal of safety in Old Town. One of those contributing factors to the resident's safety was the parolee drop-offs from the county detention center in Adelanto. The drop-offs were occurring four times daily in Old Town at the transportation center. This was a huge concern of the residents and business owners who witnessed these drop-offs daily. Abundant Living Church was the only organization that responded to the county's RFP and on November 26th began their new pilot program. They are now providing transportation to those who are being released and have no transportation from the detention center with a ride home. In the first three days of the program, they were able to provide 54 people with the ride home, which before this program began would have been dropped off in Old Town, adding to the overwhelming issue of nuisance and illegal behavior already occurring in Old Town. On behalf of Root, we would like to thank you, Mayor Garcia, councilmembers, City Manager Keith Metzler, and of course, Captain Rick Besseger for your assistance with this matter. You have made a difference in more than one person's life for the greater good of Victorville. Thank you all.
After Derek King will be Manny Lopez.
Good evening, council. Congratulations to Ms. Ramirez and to Ms. Jones, and also congratulations on being voted in mayor pro tem. Well, as you can see, I have on an "I Love the High Desert" shirt, right? It's our regional effort as it relates to the Chamber of Commerce. It's about pride, not just pride in Victorville, but pride across our entire high desert. What we're trying to do is simply celebrate what we do well. We understand that we are a group of people who are talented, we have great businesses, we're raising smart children, and we want to keep pushing that forward. So everything that we're doing is about simply celebration, not celebration for one particular city, but celebration for all cities, for all areas, throughout our businesses, throughout our civic centers, as well as with our residents. I also want to say thank you so much for the signage that's on 7th Street, because again, it's beautiful. That's what we're talking about now. What we're not talking about is simply cleaning up. We're talking about beautification, we're talking about excellence. We're a group of excellent people, we're an excellent region, and we want to promote that. One of the things that we're going to encourage, and we'll be visiting all of the cities and town councils throughout our region, is to encourage our council people, our city staff, to wear the shirt. "I Love the HD," right? It allows us to collaborate, it allows us to work together. All the people that are behind us, to wear the shirt. There's no profit in the shirt for us, it's $10. It costs us $10 to make, they're sold for $10, simply because we're looking to promote the efforts, the region's pride, and celebrate what we do. Again, congratulations to the new city and council people, and thank you so much.
Manny Lopez, and after Manny will be Maggie Martin.
Yes, good evening. Congratulations, everybody. Manny Lopez, Dos Costas Communications Corporation. We have several radio stations here in the high desert, the duck of the desert, the only Spanish commercial station, I know we have a Christian station here in town, we have El Porta 95.9 FM, the duck of the desert, and AM 1230, home of the L.A. Lakers and USC Trojans. Here today to just congratulate the city, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, great to see everybody. I really believe you have a great team up here. I know some of you folks personally, individually, business dealings here, and we are just here to let you know that we, as broadcasters here in the high desert, English and Spanish, since we have no public Spanish publication here in the high desert, period. So my concern, and should be yours, is how are we communicating with our monolingual or Spanish-speaking community? That's one thing. I know we can certainly get the word out for you, so keep that in mind. And we are involved with the city, great parade, great parade, annual parade, the tree lighting, the fall festival, you guys are on the right track. We would also like to maybe come in and produce some events for you. We worked with Art LeBeau and did a big concert in Barstow just over the weekend with MC Magic. So keep those things in mind, Tamale Festival we're talking about, so we'll see what happens. Congratulations, keep up the good work.
Thank you. Thank you. Maggie Martin, and after Maggie, Tyler Woodard.
Good evening, Your Honor, council. A little off my game tonight, because other than this nice, beautiful ceremony that we're having, you pretty much know why I'm here, as I had delivered letters to Mayor Garcia, Mayor Pro Tem Cox, and at that time, Councilman Negrete and Councilman Kennedy. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So I was approached by Mayor Pro Tem Cox prior to the meeting, and I'm not here to put a damper on this very beautiful occasion. It's basically not to cause chaos or anything like this, but I have my, or you have my central motion before you. I'm going to forego the very long list of reasons that I have written down why that's necessary, in my opinion, but I'm going to defer until the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Tyler Woodard, and then after him, Ramiro Rodriguez.
Good evening, council. I just want to congratulate Debra Jones and Rita Ramirez.
Thank you. Ramiro Rodriguez, and then Alejandra Diaz.
Hello, council, the new members, Ms. Jones and Ms. Ramirez. Glad to have you guys up there, and hopefully you guys have enjoyable and wonderful memories here in Victorville. I'm new to Victorville. I can actually say I'm an immigrant to Victorville, because last week, I was listening to a speech made about how Victorville was in the red, three and a half million dollars in the red. Income was from 60 million to 45 million, and everything, the houses were foreclosed on, and all of a sudden, then they said, "Oh, we got all together and we did our magic and we got the city back on track." But you know what it was? It was all the people that came from down the hill. This year, 345 people moved into Victorville from 2018, 2017. In 2010, 52,000 people moved up here to Victorville. So I think those people are the ones that saved the city, while also with the management of the city council, too, but it was pretty much the new guys that came up here. I applaud the people that lived here all their lives, but we have a new set of people living up here, they just came up here, and they have their needs also. A gentleman was telling me there's no Spanish publication. You know what? There's 38% of the population up here do not speak English. And for the last two years, we've been up here trying to get some sort of funding for translation services so the people that are not here and watching up there can actually listen in real time, not the garbled stuff that the translation service of the website dishes out. So that's very important. Remember, 38% of the population here in Victorville do not speak English. And we have the ballots in Spanish, English, Chinese, Korean, what language, why can't we have the translation services to help those people? Because those people are paying taxes, remember. Those people are some of the very important people that saved the city. And we're like, the immigrants that came up here from down the hill. It makes up 52,000 people out of the 122,000 people that were living here, I mean, 60-some-thousand people that were living here before. So we doubled the population, the people that came up here. So we want to be part of this, of this city. As to the golf course, it's costing $667,000 a year, $55,000 a month, $13,000 a week. And we're paying for it. Like I said, you don't golf, there should be some way where the city doesn't have, we don't have to pay for it, maybe association.
You have 30 seconds.
Maybe association dues can be imposed on the homeowners, not, maybe $100 we paid completely well, per, what, 400 houses? There's ideas that we throw out there, but most important, we need right now, translation services for the Hispanic community, and hopefully, talk to this gentleman for the radio station, and we'll have the Spanish publications up here. Thank you very much, and congratulations, and wish you all the best. Thank you.
Good evening, councils and city major. Good evening, all of you. I am very happy. I am very happy that I have those two new women up there, that I, you know, the city is filled with hope. is filled with hope, with hope that we're going to have a new assessment through the entire administration and a new input into the needs of the city, which I think in so many various sectors, we've been forgotten. And the city is blessed with you. Congratulations, Jones. Congratulations. This is Ramirez. I'm very happy with the results. We just want to let you know that the community is facing a lot of needs, a lot of needs, especially the most needs and the most vulnerable, kids, elderly, and young students that need, like she said, more opportunities, less barriers, and more to lessen. Debra Jones says transparency. Yes, I am eager to receive transparency as a residence of Victorville and also as a business person. I want to know transparency and I want to know where my tax dollars goes. It's very, how can I say? It's a shame that right now in this moment, Mayor Garcia is using the city attorney to defend herself in a personal matter. I don't think our tax dollars should be spent that way. I think there is more priorities that we need to put first. And hopefully, a new team can, you know, advise her that all the wrong, those problems that she find on her own self, and she needs to deal with them on her own and under her own expenditures. We are looking forward to be here by you guys. We're looking forward to receive services. We are looking forward to us to pay attention to the need, and we're looking to be, forward to be respect as a community. We're looking to be taking in account what can we provide to the city and what we're expecting to, from all of you. We are looking forward to be served like we deserve.
You have 30 seconds? Thank you. Manuel Muscuis.
Congratulations, Ms. Ramirez and Ms. Jones. We're thankful that you guys are here. And I think the voters picked the right people. I don't, I'm sure everyone agrees. So I get excited when I come up here because most importantly, I want to share love through our community, right? Which is why I ran for City Council to help the community become better. But it's not always easy, especially when we have people who come up here, just as we did with Maggie, right? But most importantly, when we have people at Christmas parties causing and encouraging violence, okay? So the Christmas party that we just had, that the mayor was at with Ramirez and myself, Ms. Gomez there, with everybody, we came, we were sitting there partying, dancing on the dance floor, which is what we do often, right? So again, the reason this is frustrating for me is because I don't like to cause this kind of energy. But what happened was, as we were partying on the dance floor, we had Ms., the city clerk, I believe it's Charlene Robinson, she walked over towards Ms. Gomez on the dance floor and then brought a group of friends, two, three girls, three guys, I was with them the whole time, brought them over and started getting closer to circle her, right? So the reason I'm bringing this up is because I'm sure you guys all just saw what, you guys just saw what Maggie said, right? I wasn't the only one. So these things need to stop. That was an act of violence that was encouraged by our council, by our staff members, right? Or by the staff. So Ms. Ramirez, Ms. Jones, what I ask you, as you guys join the new team, what I ask you guys is to please do, teach the, our community, teach our workers how to, how to just be better, be better people, how to work better. There was no reason, and again, that was an act of provoking violence. They, more, I'm sure you guys will hear this story over the time, but two of them pushed her until she had to defend herself, until I had to get in between. Everybody saw, I know. Sophia was there, Ms. Sophia, she actually walked us out while the other guys were, a couple of workers were following us. So this is why I'm asking you guys. And again, this is, I don't speak well when I have to share negative information. I wish to spread love through our community, that's all we need. But when we have people like Maggie and we have people who are disrespectful to our community, to our officials, that comes back, that comes back to our community and energy. So what we need to do is, again, fix this situation with the city clerk, Charlene Robinson, right? Fix this situation, ask her, because I heard that she was pressing charges, right? So let's do something, let's make it better. And again, I mean, we need to fix our community. So ladies, I hope you guys come to this council, to the city, to really bring the healing that this community needs, right? I appreciate you, everybody.
That was the last card that, oh, another one?
Good evening, council. Congratulations to my opponents who had a better campaign than I did. Some of us run because we want to make a difference and we make ourselves clear on the difference and we get that opportunity. I hope you are able to keep that vision and make that opportunity happen. Some of us run to bring to light the needs of portions of our city. And when they ask me, did you win? I just say, I survived. And I think most of us that ran can relate to that idea that I survived. And I want to thank the city council, the past city council, who has understood the need of Root and the need of Old Town, downtown, or the birth of Victorville. And I hope that the new council, from what I've heard, is focused on that and will continue to move that way. And I respect everybody's vote. I'm not a golfer, but the voters have expressed their concern and their need to keep the golf course. So let it be that way and I will support that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. That was the last card that I had. Now we have the reception at this time. Everyone's invited to join. There is a reception next door here, and you're welcome to come and join us. And this is in honor of our two new council persons. Please join us. Meeting is adjourned.